God, this is the Harris City Council of Orange, June 4, 2024. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilwoman Harris, followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Father, God, we give you praise, glory, and honor, just another opportunity to call on your holy and righteous name. Now, God, we ask that you be in the midst of us as we sit here and make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Harriman. Let us be mindful to be in harmony, and let us be mindful to be strategic in our decision-making processes. We ask you to bless these United States of America. We ask you to bless Rome County, and we ask you to bless the city of Harriman. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's raise the flag.
Of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Alicia Harris.
Here.
Brian Frost. John Brackett.
Here.
Travis Kirkland.
Here.
Kenyon Mead.
Here.
Like to Clark.
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 21st, 2024 meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Brackett. Second by Councilman Johnson. Councilman Brackett. So, Councilman Johnson. Floor is open for discussion. Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Brackett.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Kenyon Mead.
Motion carries. Motion to pay salaries.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Harris.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brackett. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Brackett.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Brackett.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Kenyon Mead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion to pay the bills.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Brackett. Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Brackett.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Brackett.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Kenyon Mead.
Yes.
Motion carries. Is this the only delegation? If you'd like to address this council, come up to the podium, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Sorry, I brought my body bag. I'm Jennifer Brown with the Wrong Alliance, but I think you guys pretty much know who I am by now. And what I'm passing around right now is just a snapshot of some things that we've been working on the past month or so. And on this front page, you'll see we've kicked off the 2024 Rome County Youth Leadership Class. It's a good group of kids. We've got a really good cross-section of the entire county. Each high school is represented along with some homeschool and the virtual academy. And the camp week was last week and the Friday before, and they just had a really good time. We've got a great group of students. So be on the lookout for if you would love to be visiting y'all. They should be wearing their blue polos as usual. And if you flip it over to the other side, last Saturday, we were able to pull off the first-ever Romer Jeep Festival at Swampland Sports Complex. The name was derived from two counties, Rome and Morgan. The festival started at Swampland Sports Complex, like I said, and we had Jeeps from all over the southeast. We had Georgia, Alabama, North Carolina. We've had one from Indiana. So that was, we pulled a bunch together there. And the total Jeeps that were there out throughout the day was 255. And then we went, we took a group ride from the sports complex and we came down through downtown Harriman. So everybody got to see how beautiful it is down here. Then we took a left there at Jerry Duncan, went up through Oakdale, and then came back down and went to Brush Cheek, and they had a concert and the fireworks show. And but we look to have this as an annual event, so look for it next year. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Brilliant, us.
Anyone else? Now, we're going to reports. We're going to move the utility report to the next meeting. Treasure report.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, council members. You can see there in front of you, have the executive summary for the month of May. And we continue to have revenues in line with what we had forecasted, and which is just slightly above last year's revenues. But I do want to remember, remind you all that we did budget for $100,000 less than last year's revenue. So we're going to come in with about $130,000 higher in revenue associated from local option sales tax. So I just wanted to mention that. And of course, at the end of the meeting tonight, we've got a brief workshop regarding the budget, and I'll look forward to having more comments at that point.
Do I have anything for Mr. President?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
See you, Attorney.
Since the last, since the last meeting, thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting, we've certainly been available and given advice to city officials and others within the city, as well as we've worked on some ordinances. A couple of those are in the packet for tonight. And are the, there's a couple of agreements that are in the packet tonight. We've worked on agreements. We've worked on the beer ordinance. We've, we've worked on the pool hall ordinance. We've, we've been working on various, various ordinances as well as what you have in your packet. So that's within the last 15 days. Within the last 15 days, we've also have been served with a lawsuit from the Rome Central Utility District, which we may talk about in a session a little bit later today. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have anything to respond to? Thank you, sir. Information.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. Quick update preparation for when we will change our council meetings. I'll try and give just a compilation of the reports and a brief explanation, just a few pictures. But what I'll try and do is have this for you every council meeting and have the update, and certainly email out each of the department heads, their reports they send out monthly. Just bring you up to speed on the streets, our signal timing and equipment upgrades. That's still clicking along very well. They're just waiting those to proceed. Our scheduled paving that we had lined out for this year will probably be late summer, and Rogers Group was the one that got that through the state contract. And then our June 1st is our date in which the contract will be awarded for the paving of Rome Street that we've been working hard for 25 years. Also, if you've been out on Morning Drive, you know we had a problem with, it was a dangerous situation that Drac has been working on. We got that repaired. Drac cut that out. The tree limbs of, tree roots were cut. He's filled that with gravel. We're going to let that really settle before we go in there and pack it. But that's made Morning Drive a lot safer. This coming Saturday, we have our 101st Annual Anniversary Golf Tournament. Also, our football and cheer sign-ups are underway, and that's using our new system now called Sports Connect, where you do that online. And Charlie and I talked with the Parks and Rec Committee. So all our parents and kids that signed up, they can do it on their phone. They can go to the library, the community center. We'll have computers set up here. Can certainly do it at their house if they so choose. But really thanks in getting that set up to Bailey Myers, who set that whole thing up. Where's Bailey? In the back. And Councilman Johnson and Councilman Brackett, because they had this, they sent through the presentation a couple of weeks ago and went through it. But I think it's going to bring us, make Charlie and our Parks and Rec a whole lot more organized, and the other cities are doing it. So we're just a couple of years behind. So thanks to everybody as we kick that off. We have a big diamond youth baseball tournament that'll be ages seven and eight. That's going to take place next week. There'll be two games every night. And I think Charlie left in your place right there. You've got a pass, so come down and support it. It's going to be, if the weather cooperates, which it should, should be a good night for everybody who's there to watch and everybody who's there to play. June 20th, put that on your calendar. That is going to be Throwback Thursday. And I don't know if Jen wants to throw anything yet about that, but she's been working hard on vendors. That's formerly known as Rockin' on Rome. We've moved it from Friday night to Thursday night, trying to have more food vendors, involve our downtown merchants a little more. And anything else you want to add, Jen? Or you're going to wait until the next council meeting? I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And then Saturday, we have our splash pad.
Oh, yeah, we.
Okay. I thought you were going to say.
Yeah, we, no, 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 no.
Okay, sorry.
But yeah, we're excited that because Jen's rebranded. She's worked closer with the Chamber on that. So Throwback Thursday's coming up on the 20th, and then she was trying to burst my bubble. But this coming Saturday is Bash at the Pad, and Jen has organized that. And that's from 11:00 to 3:00. And she's got food trucks. Go ahead, Jen, tell them about that if you want to.
Food trucks now comes, and Charlie's part of it, too.
And you've got a TBA coming up, haven't you?
Yeah, TBA's coming. They're doing popcorn, handing out little goodies.
So it should, it's something we've never done before, and so we expect a good turnout. Weather's supposed to be really nice. So bring your kids, your grandkids to the Splash Pad from 11:00 to 3:00 this coming Saturday. June 22nd, 22nd at Fred Davis Park, Triangle Park, we're having our Juneteenth Freedom Day Celebration. That'll be from 3:00 o'clock into a question mark. If anything like it was last year, it will go on all day. So it's a good time to go up there and celebrate the history behind that park and celebrate Juneteenth. The 23rd, this is just a reminder, and the 30th of July, I know it's a ways out, but we have our website design class, and that's through Matt Hill, who runs our website. And he's putting that on for social media for any businesses who want to learn how to promote their business. And it's not just Harriman. It's open to anybody. And it's free of charge. We'll do that in the training room. August 16th, we have a community baby shower. That'll be held at our community center. And if it's half as popular as it was last year, it will be very successful again. Jimmy, our COGS guy, is currently working on 42 cases. Most of those involve overgrown yards, but also include some houses that are waiting on the building inspector for inspection. Our grant update, our interchange lighting, if you've been down there lately. Of course, Chris and I were talking about the budget. This past year, we paid a large part of our portion, our entire portion, which is $734,000. But they're moving forward. Still need to put the high mast lights up. They're still shooting for an August 24th completion date of our interstate lighting. Our CDVG application has been submitted, as well as our LPRF. We will hear from CDVG from early to mid-fall, and then for our LPRF, summer to early fall, when we should hear something back on that. I did send you all an email out about our Temperance Building. We've sort of been treading water. Our next step, we've not used any of that grant money yet on our restoration, and we think we finally found somebody. I sent that out to you all at Anoxville that can come in and do a fantastic job, very reasonable on restoring those windows, which is our next step. So we have a meeting this, a week from tomorrow night to discuss that, and hopefully we'll have that representative here. And certainly welcome to be at that meeting, and I hope that our next council meeting will bring a recommendation for the Temperance Building to move forward and start spending some of that grant money. Talked with Charlie, Charlie Water today. He is the lead person for Quick Trip. Just a quick update on that. They've submitted their building permit. They're waiting on easement documents that have been sent to the previous owner. They have to construct a retaining wall. The T-DOT parcel purchase was completed in record time, and all utilities have been coordinated and deposits been paid. So everything's moving right along with our Quick Trip. Valvoline, I just stumbled on it today. They opened Friday. Got with Jen. We're going to schedule a ribbon cutting for that, but there's already a long line, and that's right across from Lowe's. Talked to their manager, so they're very excited to be here. And like I said, just another good service to provide to our citizens. And also, we have new business open up. Stephanie Richer, did I say that right, Donna? Photography in the building that's formerly known as the Happy Dashery. She is a photographer coming out of Anoxville, excited to be here in Harriman, very well-known for her work. So as soon as they get that building ready to open, we'll have a ribbon cutting for them. Got some pictures here. This was from last Wednesday, our first summer reading program. Connie sent those to us. You can see all those pictures. The kids had a great time. On the left is our newest employee, and that is Chris Cochran. He is part-time, and he is working here in the city hall. He's helping after events that we have in Gates Hall, get that turned around so we're ready for the next event, and possibly going to use him over to clean the library a little bit. But he has been a blessing, does a great job. He just keeps all the city hall clean.
What's his last name?
Cochran, C-O-C-H-R-A-N. On the right, yesterday, we had the first day of our kids' camp through our police, and they met down at Riverfront Park. And they've got about 30 kids there. They've had, Harriman Utility Board's going to speak, the fire department, all of our city's departments, TBA. So that'll last all week. And then Friday, it culminates at the Splash Pad with a cookout and the day at the Splash Pad. There's a Jen's Throwback Thursday coming up. That's posted on our Facebook page, also on our TV monitor as you go out. Community baby shower, which we mentioned, our summer bash at the Splash Pad. Ribbon cutting will be this Friday. I'll send a reminder out for vintage antiques. Talking with Daryl. He's very excited. And just up the street there, and then, of course, Juneteenth celebration, which will be on the 22nd. On the left, was very happy to host Rome County Youth Leadership here last week, and we managed to get all of our department heads, even Councilman Johnson, stopped by and gave some words of wisdom to those kids right there. And that's what Jennifer was just telling us about. And then on the right, right there, is our pickleball courts. We continue to make upgrades there. We put some fresh gravel down. We've got the sign coming. Hopefully, this week, we can post. They're supposed to have a tournament to put a windscreen, but if you go by there at just about all hours of the day, those courts are packed and.
Have you been able to test it out, city manager?
Um, yeah, I've given some lessons down there. But no, I'm hooked. I was just telling Councilman Me, yes, it is.
He said he loves it. That's why I said.
Yeah.
So, I see, play Councilman Brackett's what I want to know.
What's that? Councilman Brackett, I, are our team, yeah.
Oh, Lord, how merciful. You look like a young John McEnroe.
And that's my report, unless you have any questions for me. Rest of the information will be in the direction.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Scott.
Before we go into new business, we've got a special guest here tonight that we kind of want to recognize, or we don't kind of want to, we want to recognize. We, we was blessed last year to get a new principal at Harriman High School, and basically brought, brought Chastity back home. And, you know, people say sometimes that, you know, you've got to go outside to find people. You've got to do, sometimes they're right here in your own backyard. You've just got to bring them back home. And the school board did that with Chastity. And to be honest with you, as the mayor of Harriman, I couldn't be prouder of where our high school is right now.
Me, too.
The part of the community that they have filled. And people ask me all the time, what's the city got to do with schools? It's the county. First off, that's our kids, our most important asset. And second off, it's, you know, people from a city, we look at it, when cars are driving up and down this road and going to that school, you come here in the summertime, and you tell me the traffic compared to when school's going on. Parents are dropping those kids off. They're looking at our shops. They're stopping in our shops. Ball games are coming into Harriman. They're going to eat at our place. That's where a lot of our tax revenue comes from, is our school. So it benefits us in a lot of ways. But, but the change in the culture, not saying anything about the old culture, but I can tell the difference. And I think everybody can, and that goes to anything in Harriman. The excitement that you bring is just second to none. It is, it's just, it's great to go to Harriman High School right now and just drop in. And, you know, I've been a mayor for eight years, and I've been in the high school more than the last year than I've been in that high school probably in 20 years. And it's because of the leadership. And I read on, you know, she gave us some upgrades that they've done, but the most important thing that I read on her, her thing was, it's just not one person who changed HHS. It took an entire village. And a person that puts the credit to where it goes, which is the people around it, is important. And I, I heard seeing that and knowing that it takes that village to make that happen, but it took that person with that vision to put into place for that village to follow. And Chastity, from the city of Harriman, we are honored and grateful to have you as part of our community. We've got a plaque. You guys are welcome to come down, or you can stand right here.
Making her accomplishments just from the first year alone are up there on the screen, so.
If everybody could read all that stuff on that screen and, for the first time ever, Harriman, not just with Chastity, with the village, got 100% people registered to vote. They could get registered to vote. That don't happen. I saw, as a, as a principal in Rome County for 15 years, how many times did that happen with his, you know?
Couldn't do it.
Couldn't do it. So, you know, if it's not her, it's the leadership under her. So that's important. And what the plaque says, "The city of Harriman, presented to Chastity Lowry. In recognition for your outstanding leadership, compassion, and dedication, we're grateful for your invaluable commitment and the difference you have made in our community." Mayor Wayne Best, Harrington City Council.
Thank you. Okay, we all have to come back. We just painted the cafeteria this week. Cafeteria's been painted this week.
We'll wait till they start cooking again.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you all having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you so much.
We bought cookies. They got our two extra biscuits.
Guys, are we allowed to save one brick, brick by brick? Or is that? If we get rid of that brick by brick. Thank you, Chastity, and thank you to your family. Not only did you take the principal's job at Harriman, you moved inside of Harriman to be a part of the community that you teach in and that you lead in, and that means a whole lot. So thank you, thank you to your husband. Because I know your time is spent there a lot, and, you know, you've got a beautiful little daughter, so I know, but we appreciate you.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll go into new business. First item, discussing possibly approved the sale of a 1994 Ford F-150, then 1FTD F-15Y5RND19814 on Gov. Deals.
Motion.
Second, motion by Councilwoman Harris. Second by Councilman Kirkland. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Kirkland. Floor is open for discussion. Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
John Brackett.
Yes.
Travis Kirkland.
Yes.
Kenyon Mead.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Next item, discussing possibly approved a bid of $9,500 for Derek Hedrick excavation. But before I go into that, Scott, will you kind of tell a little bit about what's happening with this development?
Yeah, Jimmy, our COGS guy, we were talking. We put this bid out back in March, and we called Derek Hedrick today. Just let him know this was on the agenda. If it's approved, we set up a time for demolition and cleanup of this property that, just to inform Derek Hedrick that we wanted to wait till after new budget was passed before we went any further. And he informed us verbally that he's no longer in that business. So he was the low bidder. So I guess my recommendation would be go to our next low bidder, which would be CK Construction, $11,100 with the same terms. I did talk with CK Construction in the afternoon to see if that bid was still valid. Verbally, they told me they would, and I said, they're about four weeks behind. I said, well, it's just, we need to get it cleaned up, but it would still fall, just like we had in the packet in the next budget year if it's approved. If this is approved tonight, and if our budget's approved at that time. So my recommendation would be to go to our next lowest bidder, which would be CK Construction for $11,100.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Kirkland to go with CK Construction.
I'll say that, motion.
Second by Councilman Brackett. Councilman Kirkland. Councilman Brackett. Floor is open for discussion.
And that is subject to the, to that being added in the next budget?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, typically, what we do is put up some money for property cleanup.
Yeah, we'll have that in the contract, too, subject to that.
No further discussion. Call the row, please.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Alicia Harris.
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved Blue Cross Blue Shield as the City of Harriman Healthcare Provider for 2024, 2025. Our committee, which is made up of two council representatives, and the, the staff here have met with Sarah and went over it, and they're recommending that we go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, the same as we have now. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Brackett, Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Brackett.
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call girl, please.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved grant authority to the mayor and the city manager to CK and enter into construction, structural negotiations to secure a firm that would assist in development of properties within the city limits. The contract will not exceed $30,000, and ARPA funds would be allocated for the fulfillment of the contract. Also in that, there would be no contract signed without the attorney's approval. It will have to go through the attorney first.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Kirkland.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Kirkland.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Harris.
I know you indicated that this would not, you all would not go into a contract without the attorney, but you would also notify the council, right? Okay. That's all. Notify council, but it won't have to come back to. Correct, correct. Yes, just notification. This is for all the properties we're trying to sell on the city?
It's starting with the first two properties would be, it's working on agreements, trying to get agreements with the TBA property, the TCAT property, those are properties that they will start on first.
Because I just don't want to run into the council IDB battle that we had. Not battle, I shouldn't say. Trying to flow lines, I guess.
The other questions? Call girl, please.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Next item, discuss and possibly approve the second amendment to real estate purchase agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second. Second by Councilwoman Harris, Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilwoman Harris.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call girl, please.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved real estate purchase and sell agreement for parcel 046DA005.00.
I'd like to motion, yes.
Motion by Councilman Brackett, second.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilwoman Harris, Councilman Brackett.
No, sir.
Councilwoman Harris.
No, I think this is what we had talked about in our last meeting slash workshop, so.
Any further discussion? Call girl, please.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Travis Kirkland?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all we have on our agenda. Before we go into council remarks, I'm going to read a letter here before council, for you all to be aware of. I know that you was giving it, but I want to read it anyway. Dear whom it may concern, Mayor and City Council, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as Harriman City Council, effective today, June 4, 2024. My last day will be June 4, 2024, which is today. I've accepted a position with R&amp;L and it will further my growth and development in my career. I have more than enjoyed my time working as a city council, council member. Thank you and the council for the many opportunities, both professional and personal, that have aided my growth and development. I have enjoyed my time with the Harriman City Council, especially the support provided to me over the course of the past year. However, this new position will aid in my growth and further my career. During the next week, I am willing to help you in any way possible to make the transition as smooth as possible. I wish the Harriman family success in the future. Thank you all for the support, family, and lifelong friendships you all have provided me. Best regards, Travis J. Kirkland, the second. I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for your time that you've given, and thank you for your dedication that you have made to the citizens of Harriman. It has been an honor and privilege to work with you. I coached in Little League Ball, I coached in middle school ball, and it's been, it's been an honor watching you grow into the man that you are. So I understand your commitment to growth and your family, and understand what you're doing and why you're going, but I always know you'll always be here and you'll always be your family.
Appreciate it very much. If you're okay with it, I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir.
First off, I would like to thank Chief Brad Daniels for giving me the opportunity in the first place, along with council, and you as well, Mayor. Without y'all supporting me and my hard work, I wouldn't have done anything that I've accomplished now. But I appreciate everybody on council. Love to, you know, working with each and every one of y'all. Scott, you're fantastic. Kida, you're fantastic. Mayor, you're awesome. But I, time with my family is very important to me, and then moving on to this new venture in my life, I just feel like, I wouldn't have the time, nor would I do the, have the time to do right for the City of Harriman. And so that, that is why I'm resigning, there's nothing against anybody here at all. So thank you, guys, for.
Thank you.
For accepting me and the City of Harriman as well. Thank you, guys, very much, and just all I'm going to say to the city is just strive for excellence, all we can do. So thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion by Councilman Me, second.
I'll say it.
Second by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Me. Councilman Johnson.
It's been good working with you.
No, sir. No further discussion.
No further.
Call girl, please.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Alicia Harris?
Yes.
John Brackett?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
We're going to council remarks, Councilman Me.
I'll say it.
Councilman Brackett?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Harris?
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
You have any other, Councilman?
Kind of have to gavel one.
You can dismiss us in our meeting. But before you do, I'd like to say to the people that watch this and that tune in, these people give so much of their time away from their family and to the citizens of Harriman. People don't understand what it takes to sit behind here and make the decision that you guys made, day in and day out. I don't make the decisions, I don't have, I don't get the votes so I can blame it on you guys. I appreciate that. It does take a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I'd like to say, what Travis done tonight is bold because he could have stayed and done a disjustice because he couldn't have come, he couldn't be here like he wanted to, but he done what he thought was right, what was in his heart, and we appreciate that, and, but just note that these people give a lot of time away from their family for really nothing, for the love that they have for their city. Thank you, guys, for what you did. It does feel unnoticed.
Absolutely.
Don't break my, don't hit me.
Dismissed?
Yes, sir.
Dismissed?
Wait a minute, a motion to.
A motion to dismiss?
He gets to do it.
Second.
Second.
All right. First by Councilman Me, second by Councilwoman Harris. Dismissed.
He wanted to get that camera away.